Hello and thank you for tuning into the 2025 At-Large Concord City Council Forum. I'm Tony Shinella, a senior local editor with Concord New Hampshire Patch, and we are in Concord TV studios here at Concord High School. This is our, we've been doing this with Concord TV for about 10 years, and I just want to thank again all the volunteers and employees here for helping us out to bring our forums and other things to you, both on TV and online. This forum was recorded on October 6th, and we will be hearing from two of the five candidates who are running at large for two seats for year terms on November 4th. Each candidate will be given a one-minute opening-closing statement, and then I'll answer, oh, sorry, I will ask questions in between. Today, we have incumbent Fred Keach, who is the longest-serving member of the city council currently, and we have Robert Washburn, who's a previous city councillor who's also running. Three of the candidates could not be here today or chose not to be here today, and so we're just talking to Fred and Robert. Fred, I'm going to let you start first. You have one-minute opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Fred Keach, and I want to thank Concord Patch and Concord TV for having us here this evening. With less than 10 weeks between the filing period and the election, we really have a compressed timeline to get our message out, so I appreciate this opportunity. My message and goals are pretty straightforward. I want to live in a community that prioritizes public safety. Second, I want to live in a community that fosters vibrant commisional development. And third, I want to live in a community where affordable housing is within reach for all. We cannot continue to tax the average person out of Concord, and that's a problem at the moment. I was first elected on the council 46 years ago, I'm sorry, 18 years ago at age 46, not quite that old. And there was, to be honest, it was a bit of a learning curve for the first couple of years. But in that time, the one sort of axiom that's guided me in my decision-making is when making policy or forming policy, is the ask, a want, or a need. And really, just like in your own household, you need to make decisions about how your limited money is spent, what's needed and what's wanted. So those are the three basic tenets that I want to focus on, and I think all of that leads to a vibrant community where Concord doesn't look back but looks forward and builds on what we've done already.
Thank you. Robert?
I'm going to make my opening brief. I'm running for the beleaguered property taxpayer. I'm running for, actually technically reelection, because I feel the council has lost its focus. Yes, there are wants, yes, there are needs, but somehow they've lost focus on who they really should be representing, and that's the taxpayer. Every two years, you hear of the need for additional tax base. Every two years, that's the promise. Two years later, they keep promising that, they're never delivering. And when I say tax base, they don't differentiate. Part of the tax base is tax-exempt, part of the tax base is in a TIP district, and the remainder is never gets a cost-benefit analysis as whether it's good tax base or questionable tax base. So that's basically why I'm running. I feel a lot of you out there, your voices haven't been heard, and I intend to make them heard.
Thank you, Robert. Fred, let's start with you, since you're the incumbent. You voted this year for the highest city property tax rate increase in recent memory, close to 20 years, and you've been on the council, so you know, most of those budgets have been 0% to 3%. This was the first year, I think, in all of that time that was over, over 3%, or definitely nowhere near 5. And then you spent six hours basically arguing over 1%. You had to cut 1%. Obviously, a lot of people were pretty upset with that, thought it was, a lot of the back-and-forth was not really, you know, it was chaotic, if you will. If reelected, what would you do differently to streamline that process, say, in the next two years for budgets?
Well, I've actually read a few things that Mr. Washburn's mentioned, and a lot of that discussion ought to happen well before the budget hearings. Making budget cuts or adjusting the budget on the last night of the budget hearings at the final hour is not a good use of time. So I think better, much better preparation is necessary going into it. And I would also encourage folks to reach out to us and let us know, you know, how we can reduce taxes, because the reality is, you know, 85% of the budget is police, fire, or general services. It's approximately 500 employees citywide, and most of them are on those three agencies. Majority of the costs are wages and compensation. So if you're talking about reducing the budget, or even holding tax rate flat, you're talking about reducing positions and reducing services, because in the city, people are the services. It's a direct translation. So I'm not sure we have the appetite to do that. I welcome people to please contact me and let me know what's acceptable.
Thank you. Robert, same question, you're a little different. You've been on, you've dealt with the budgets for, I think you were on the council for 10 years, right?
Yes, I was.
What would, if you are elected, what would you do differently? And you were at that six-hour meeting, if I recall.
Yeah, that was painful. And I didn't understand why in previous budget sessions, they didn't make cuts or recommend the changes during those previous budget sessions and waited for the 11th hour. It made no sense. I think part of the problem is they go into a budget process looking at tax rate increase. They should be looking in terms of essential and non-essential services, and is there a more cost-effective way to deliver those services? They don't do that. To me, that's the heavy lifting, that they should be giving the administration and haven't been giving the administration. The administration's got the more expertise and should be held more accountable, and force them to give the council alternatives in delivering the essential and non-essential services.
Thank you. Robert, housing is one of the biggest problems facing the city, but there's been a lot of new housing built. You know, the council and city officials have been working with developers and nonprofits, New Hampshire Housing and other organizations, to get a lot of units, new units built. However, I've noticed that there are, we're coming up to a big problem where affordable units have strict compliance issues, and many people who make under $60,000 can qualify for those units. The rail yard, for example, a family of three can't make more than $53,000 to get one of those two-bedroom units, and I believe it's around $1,500, which is expensive, but still a market rate for that, you know, what would be considered. Yet the people in the median, most of the people who live in the city, are in the 60 to 80 range. They don't qualify for the affordable units, but they're, and they aren't necessarily getting into the $3,000-a-month units, because you can't qualify, you don't make enough money. So the majority of the people are in here, and there's no units being built for them. These people get units, and these people get units. What could you do as a councillor in the next two years to ensure when the city is involved in a project, there's a bit more availability for the people who are in need most in the largest section of our residency?
Well, first off, I think the best-kept secret was the fact we reached our sewer capacity in Pennacook and Hall Street. And that wasn't divulged until Chip retired. So we've been approving all these housing units with zero sewer capacity. I think it's right to focus on the affordability of housing, but we haven't focused on creating jobs that can afford those units. If we were to shift our focus just a little towards creating those jobs that can afford those units, the community would be better off. I think, what's the average family income in Concord, $66,000?
Medium, yeah.
Medium.
Medium, yeah.
That's, we need to increase that medium, and the only way we can do that is to bring in the jobs that will increase that medium wage, vis-à-vis the tech and private sector.
Fred, same question to you. What can be, you know, you can't, ex-developer builds whatever building, they're going to charge what they want. But the city is involved in, you know, I mean, they gave Isabella away, you know, I mean, you know, that was, that was a city property.
Right.
And it's a beautiful building, but you have to be rich to live in it.
Yeah, well, it's a good question. And to Mr. Washburn's point, it's a bit of a chicken-and-the-egg thing. Do the jobs come first and the housing falls, or does the housing come first and the jobs follow? I think it's a combination of both, probably, but that's an important point. But I think, more importantly, to your question, Tony, you know, I'm very much about free enterprise and letting developers develop what they want. If they want to take the risk to build high-end housing, let them. If they want to build low-end housing, let them. I think that's entirely their call. They're risking their dollars. I think the city ought to stay out of the way of that. However, if we're giving benefits such as TIF districts and 79E and those sort of incentives, then I think the city does have some skin in the game and can dictate some requirements, some percentage of that development be medium or lower-income housing. And I would agree 100% Tony, that the folks right in the middle are hit hardest because they don't qualify for any subsidies, and of course, they're not upper-end where they can afford these inflated rates.
And those people are, tend to be the most not-stable, I guess is not really the word, but they're the ones who are going to stay here, and they can't even buy either, because now you have 400, you know, most of those places are 350, 400,000.
That is the fabric.
You're not going to get approved.
That is the fabric of Concord. You've got 20% down here, 20% up here, and then a big fat bunch in the middle, and those are the folks that are getting squeezed hardest.
Fred, let me continue with you. Some in the city think there should be a sanctioned homeless camp that allows homeless campers to stay somewhere. Where do you come down on this issue? And also, what can you do in the next two years to make sure places like Bow and Loudon and Hawkinson, you know, contribute to the process? Why, why don't we look at them and say, hey, you really need to provide a homeless encampment for them?
Yes.
Why does it have to be here?
It doesn't have to be here, and I think, as you've seen, communities south of us become a little more strict about enforcing laws on the books and just holding folks accountable. For instance, in Manchester, things are just less uncomfortable there for homeless folks, and they have left, and Concord has been one of the destinations. So, yeah, that's a problem. In terms of a homeless camp, I would 100% not be in favor of that. One, I don't think it's the city's role to address that problem. And number two, I think it would just be a disaster, and I think, I know, other communities have tried it without success, so I would be completely opposed to that. Your other issue about surrounding communities sharing the burden of all the services we provide, I think that's a fair question, and I think it would be very difficult to corral some of these small towns into contributing anything. But I do think there's an opportunity to partner with the county and get some funding through the county, vis-à-vis, they would increase the tax rate in Merrimack County, and we would essentially see smaller communities contributing to the services we provide. So I think that's one solution.
I know one thing, I'm going to let you answer, Robert, real quick, but one thing too, is when you look at the possible locations of where a sanctioned campground could be, the argument that the Concord Coalition has to do everything in Concord has always been, well, all these people need to be in our units or in the shelter where the services are. A sanctioned encampment is going to be miles from where the services are, which kind of throws that concept out the window, meaning, or, or it can, if it's going to go eight miles out, it can go 12, meaning, we don't have to provide the encampment. You know, maybe there's someplace in Bow and Hawkinson, and then there's a bus, or something, you know, maybe there's a cab bus, or whatever. But having to always have, be Concord doing it, just, it just doesn't seem realistic to me that we're always the ones that are, have to carry the burden for everything. Robert, where do you come down on this issue?
Concord and Franklin suffer the same problem. My solution is the Concord delegation and the Franklin delegation at the county level control the county delegation, and there should be more cooperation from Merrimack County. It should be a county-funded solution. And in terms of encampment, hell, no. We have enough problems. Yes, the Supreme Court has ruled that the law enforcement can take a bigger role, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. I know friends who've had personal experience with it with their children. Once law enforcement gets involved, if you have a mental health issue, you have a mental health solution. If you have a substance issue, you have a substance solution. If you're a veteran, there's a veteran solution. So law enforcement involvement is not necessarily a bad thing, and could be a good opportunity to solve the problem and not just kick the can down the road.
Thank you. Robert, in the next two years, well, beginning next year and over the next two years, Concord is going to move from, move to automated trash pickup. Some people, some are suggesting that the change is a good opportunity to end the purple bag tax and instead move the cost of solid waste to all property taxes like it used to be. Where do you stand on the issue?
I was against the purple bag when it came into play. I viewed it as a cost shift. And right now, when we go to automated trash collection, everything is going in the same bucket, and we're not going to have a purple bag policeman out there checking buckets. So I think the time has come to return trash collection cost to the same level that it was prior to the purple bag.
Fred?
Well.
You're on the solid waste committee, aren't you?
I am.
Yep.
I'm in favor of the purple bag program. I was part of the whole process in its inception, when the council, Nayan chaired the board, the committee. It is a cost shift, there's no doubt about it, but the thing I like about it, number one, is that the people that contribute waste pay for the waste, the people that don't contribute waste don't pay for the waste. I think that's the most fair form of taxation I can think of. So I like it for that reason. And I do also think, whether you like to recycle or want to recycle or not, people are inclined to do it because there is a dollar bottom-line savings if they don't include it as waste. So I'm in favor of the program. Depending how the automated system, the collection system goes, I think maybe a phasing out of the purple bag would make sense. But there are going to be people, and also, I think, built-up residential neighborhoods where containers could be problematic, and bags might still be a necessity, so I think we'll have to see how it rules out.
Thank you. Fred, you've been on the, you've both been on the council. Fred, you've been on a long time. As a longtime city council watcher myself, I've noticed, I've noticed a tenor change in the past two years, and I think that, and I've said this to his face, so I can say it out loud, I told the mayor after he quit, not long after he quit, I did not know how many fingers he had in the dyke to keep some of the things in check here in the city. At the same, and you, and you have several new councillors too, who were swept into office during the, two years ago. At the same time, you've been around with a bunch of different councils. I've noticed a tenor shift. Out there in the public, they're very, you know, and it tends to be one councillor who's causing a lot of these issues, but a lot of people are complaining about how chaotic the meetings seem. Clown show was one word I hear a lot by, if you're elected in the next two, in the next four years, two, you'll have one term for four years, what can you do to kind of bring up the standard, if you will, to what, you know, the decorum was on the board?
Well, to answer your question, I would agree that there is a level of dysfunction on the council now that I haven't seen in 18 years. There is, very much is a lack of collaboration with each other. There's not a lot of communication before the meetings.
And most of that's to keep from getting, breaking the open meeting law, too, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'm talking about one-on, no, but one-on-one conversations is certainly illegal.
Yeah, right, that's allowable.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not talking about group.
And there really isn't, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but let me follow that point, though. There is not a lot of that communication like there used to be.
There is not a lot of that communication.
Thank you. Because I don't know what two people are doing.
You know, presumably, you ought to know what the person two seats down's view is on an issue before you get into the process, because perhaps you can come into agreement, answer some questions ahead of time, and it's just an expedient way to legislate. So there's not a lot of collaboration going on there. That's disappointing. I think it could be a lot better. It's always discouraging when you see repeated votes that are 14 to 1. I mean, that's just, it doesn't make any sense. And lastly, I do think the, the respect for one another has a lot to do with the sort of the temperature on the national level, and I think behaviors like that have just been sort of transmitted right down to even the city council level, and it's unfortunate. Because, and just to add, I mean, plenty of people can disagree on an issue and still get along, and that's the way it should be.
Sure. Robert, you're from a couple of generations ago when you were.
We didn't have that problem.
Yeah.
Basically, we had differences of opinion on issues.
Right.
But we almost resolved them in a collegial fashion.
Right. I remember you had a fight with Kathy Rogers over the.
Oh, absolutely.
The general services building.
Yes.
If you could take 15 seconds and explain that, and then answer the question.
Well, I refer to it as the garage mahal, and it had, at the time, the Public Works Director, who I still have deep respect for, was Ronnie Ford. He used to come into the budget sessions with a container of coffee, and anytime you had a question for him, he would immediately come out with a response. My biggest concern with the garage mahal was the aircraft-type tubing they were using in the building, and he says, well, it's going to last forever. It has, to his credit. So, yes, I was very conversant in what was going on with the garage mahal, but we didn't allow it to become confrontational. We didn't allow it to be personalized, and that, I think, is a mistake of the current council.
Just to follow up, you had, there were three of you also who, who all testified in favor of the golf course at the, in one of the meetings, all from different walks of life, and you acknowledged, we're all from different walks of life, and we think that the clubhouse was a good idea, if I recall correctly.
No, that was Bert Cohen's testimony.
Oh, okay.
Publicly, I supported the downsized of the footprint.
Right.
And the downsized of the cost. But what we didn't know was any details.
Yep.
And none of the council knew details. When a councillor asked the mayor if he had seen the revised architectural renderings or the detailed cost breakdowns, his response was, no, but I trust the administration. So when the council voted to approve the new clubhouse, they were voting because it was a smaller size and it cost less, but they, they hadn't seen those details either.
Yeah.
And I think that was a mistake. They shouldn't have had the vote that way.
Yep. Fred, you wanted to jump in.
I just want to add one thing. The last part of your question is, what can we do to change things on the council? And I think beyond our election, I would just really encourage voters not to only look at our at-large election, but look at all the wards, and identify those candidates that you think are going to work collaboratively. And I'd be wary of candidates that are one-issue crusaders on something, because, yeah, they're passionate about their issue, but I don't think they broadly think about the entire city. So I would urge voters to take a hard look at that.
Sure. Robert, very quickly, because we're running out of time, please share with voters three ideas on what you would do to support expanding the tax base.
First was to eliminate the opportunity corridor at TIF district. Last year, we received a rendering from New Hampshire DOT saying the date of completion is estimated to be 2038. This year, we find out there's no money left in the cookie jar. So it's an unending, whenever it's going to start. And by eliminating the TIF district, you would free up $2 million, which if used for capital improvements, would save ratepayers, taxpayers, $4 million in debt service costs. I would focus on high-tech job creation. Londonderry, last year, got a $300-million building, high-tech building that's going to be constructed there. There was no concern about housing, no concern about job workers, because I know it's going to follow in. We should be doing the same. And I'm, I'm just overwhelmed at times at the council not digging in for more facts. I think, when I was on the council, either I voted for something, I voted against something, I was always an informed vote. I always knew exactly why I was voting in that way, and I don't think the council has all the information they have and should have to make an informed vote.
Thank you. Fred, three ideas.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of incentives, 79E, of course. I'm not in favor of doing whatever the TIF districts, I think they've served us really well.
Would you be, would you be, but on the opportunity corridor?
Retiring that?
Or dispersing that? What, where are you on that idea?
I would consider that TIF district. I think there's not a lot down there to develop. When Store Street connection comes through, possibly, but that, I bet, is 20 or 30 years away.
Sure.
I mean, if Langley Parkway is an indicator, this could be 100 years away.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
So incentives, TIF 79E. And lastly, I think we need to do much better attracting and working with developers in our community. Concord has developed a reputation for being difficult to work with. Just south of here in Manchester, you hear a much different experience. That's, that's a problem. And, you know, developers just want predictability and consistency, so if they are told something in the beginning of the process, they just need to work that in their pro forma. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But moving the goalposts halfway through the project or changing the rules is very discouraging and very costly for developers, and really causes them to look other than Concord as a place to put down roots. So that, that's a biggie.
Thank you. One last question, and then we'll get to closing statements. Fred, we'll go with you, and real quick to both of you. Crimes by the homeless have skyrocketed in the city, where the point, to the point where they're about a third of all arrests last year, while arrests have gone down slightly as well. Two years ago, they were about 20%. Most of the crimes, some, many of the crimes are frivolous, I guess, trespass, camping, whatever, but most of, many of them aren't. Arson, felons with weapons, shootings, drug dealings, et cetera. What more can be done to solve the homeless crime problem?
Well, I think it is an issue. I've been a victim of a felony knife incident with a homeless person who was robbing my car, so I've experienced it firsthand, so it is real. I think it's very infrequent, so I want to share people with that, but I think the smaller petty crimes, the more quality-of-life crimes, and they're behaviors that are problematic for our merchants downtown and people trying to enjoy our downtown. So, listen, I just think the rules ought to be enforced. I think bad behavior has consequences, and your housing situation is an excuse for bad behavior. So accountability, I think, goes a long way, and I know in Manchester, they've, they play by the rules, enforce the rules, and it's a less, it's a more hospital environment because people are behaving.
Robert?
I concur. I believe we have to increase the enforcement activity. Those that need help should get it, and by increasing the enforcement activity, we're going to reduce the opportunity of that crime happening. We need to do it so that our community feels safe. And other than that, the key to me is enforcement.
Okay, thank you. We're going to now go to closing statements by both of the candidates. Robert, you can go first.
Once again, I'm going to be brief. My focus is to bring a more informed vote to the council. I represent 1 of 15 votes. I will be a loud and proud voice for the taxpayer, which I don't think is fully appreciated right now. I, my 10 years on the council, in the past, I was involved in economic development. We had, at the time, we've gone through several key players of economic development in Concord, but we've never really had a key player to develop our light industry, and that's what we need right now. We have all the technical services at the tech, they work very hand-in-glove with our medical services community, they can work hand-in-glove with the technical community, and, and basically, that's the focus of my attention. I can't promise I'm going to lower property taxes, but I will be a voice to say that money is well-spent.
Thank you. Fred, closing statement.
Thank you. I just want to say again that, you know, I'm looking at a Concord, particularly since the Main Street was renovated, that has really turned a corner from the time that, when I, when I grew up here in the 70s and 80s, of course. So I've seen Concord really come alive and change for the better, and really. So I've seen Concord really come alive and change for the better, and I'm really excited to continue that momentum, and I want to make sure that happens in a constructive, smart way that doesn't bankrupt our taxpayers. Lowering the tax rate will never happen, I'll be honest about that. Keeping it steady, even, is very difficult. I mean, inflation is running around 3% now, and again, most of our expenses are wages and benefits to our employees, so if you cut the budget, you cut people, and those are our services. So I'm trying to make that balancing work between the taxpayers and the city services, and I want to continue to invest in Concord and continue what I see as a big turnaround and only better to come.
Thank you. Those are two of the five candidates who are on the ballot for the at-large contest. It's two seats, four-year terms. Voters go to the polls on November 4th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in 10 wards here in the city of Concord. You can go to ConcordNH.gov and hit the elections tab to find out all the information about the election and the candidates, and Patch will have a number of voter guides and other information online the week before the election. Again, thank you to Concord TV for helping us bring you this program. My name is Tony Shinella. We will see you next time.